2023 Meeting of Plymouth Township Council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to our resolutions, is there any public comment about the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will move down to our, we have four resolutions for our citizen boards tonight, and our first one, I will hand over to Ms. Bramblett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This first resolution awarded to Jerita Bourgealie by Plymouth Township Council in grateful recognition of her generous and outstanding service and contributions rendered as a member of the Human Relations Commission. Jerita Bourgealie served Plymouth Township with commitment and dedication by volunteering her time to the Human Relations Commission during the period extending from June 2018 through December 2022. Now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council hereby expresses its appreciation to Jerita Bourgealie. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered in the official minutes of Plymouth Township and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to Jerita Bourgealie, presented this 13th day of February 2023 by Plymouth Township Council. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'm sorry. I have a, sorry.
You clapped before we approved it.
I'm sorry, Jerita. I'm so excited about this because you are a founding member of that citizen board. I make a motion that this resolution be entered into the official minutes of Plymouth Township.
There's a motion from Ms. Bramblett, second from Ms. Bandish. Additional comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I think Karen's on, on the job.
Everybody else must say.
If you don't get your picture taken, you're never going to get your picture taken.
It gets official.
Oh, wow.
I remember you coming down with the mat.
Whole story.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
They were very nice.
Oh, the official.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
They were very nice.
Okay, next we have a resolution.
I'm going to hand over to Ms. Bandish.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a resolution awarded to Denise Pyke by Plymouth Township Council in grateful recognition of her generous and outstanding service and contributions rendered as a member of the zoning hearing board. Denise Pyke served Plymouth Township with commitment and dedication by volunteering her time to the zoning hearing board during the period extending from January of 2018 through December of 2022. Now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council hereby expresses its appreciation to Denise Pyke. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered in the official minutes of Plymouth Township and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to Denise Pyke, presented this 13th day of February 2023 by Plymouth Township Council. I make a motion that we officially enter this resolution into the minutes.
There's a motion from Ms. Bandish. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Visio. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor.
That's a lot of work.
Very appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a resolution awarded to Ben Dietrich by Plymouth Township Council in grateful recognition of his generous and outstanding service and contributions rendered as a member of the Environmental Advisory Board. Ben Dietrich served Plymouth Township with commitment and dedication by volunteering his time to the Environmental Advisory Board during the period extending from September 2021 through December 2022. Now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council hereby expresses its appreciation to Ben Dietrich. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the official minutes of Plymouth Township and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to Ben Dietrich, presented this 13th day of February 2023 by Plymouth Township Council. I make a motion that we enter this resolution into our official minutes.
There's a motion from Ms. Visio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council or from the audience?
I just wanted to say thank you to Ben for all of his service to the Environmental Advisory Board, being a representative to council. I know just how much he's done for that group, and I just wanted to thank you.
Additional comments? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. My turn, Coach. Go. Okay. Our final resolution is for Mike Perez for his service to our Parks Recreation and Shade Tree Advisory Board. This is a resolution awarded to Mike Perez by Plymouth Township Council in grateful recognition of his generous and outstanding service and contributions rendered as a member of the Parks Recreation and Shade Tree Advisory Board. Mike Perez served Plymouth Township with commitment and dedication by volunteering his time to the Parks Recreation and Shade Tree Advisory Board during the period extending from January 2019 through December 2022. Now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council hereby expresses its appreciation to Mike Perez. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the official minutes of Plymouth Township and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to Mike Perez, presented this 13th day of February 2023, and I would make a motion that we approve this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Two announcements. An executive session was held on January 9th, 2023, and an executive session was held on February 6th, 2023. At this time, I'll ask for approval of the minutes from our workshop meeting of January 3rd, our reorganization meeting of January 3rd, and our regular meeting of January 9th all 2023. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Motion from Ms. Visio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Approval of departmental reports and bills. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Bandish. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Whitney. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to police and public safety. Chief, anything tonight?
I have nothing.
Down to public works and sewer, we have our snow announcement. I'll hand that over to Ms. Bandish.
Okay. Winter season reminders. It is unlawful to park or abandon a car on any street within 12 hours after a snowfall of three inches or more. Vehicles will be towed at the owner's expense. Let's keep hoping that this is all just super. Use off, use off-street parking when snow is predictive. When you park your car in the driveway, there's less snow to shovel. On-street parking, only where no off-street parking is available. It's only permitted on the even-numbered side of the street in even years and on the odd-numbered side of the street in odd years, so you're parking on the odd side. Never approach removing snow removal equipment. Just because you can see the driver doesn't mean he or she can see you. We try to keep the crews fresh and rested, but extended weather emergencies can mean long hours for township employees. Please keep children and pets off the streets. Property owners are required to clear their sidewalks at least 30 inches wide within 36 hours after the snow stops. When shoveling your driveway, pile snow to the right. This will prevent plows from covering your driveway opening again. Don't shovel or plow snow into the street. Plows will just move it back into your driveway or sidewalk. If the plow is already passed, do not put snow from your driveway into the street. It will refreeze and create a hazard. If there's a fire hydrant by your home, consider adopting it. You know where it is. If it's obscured by snow, fire companies responding to emergencies may not find it. Clearing the snow from the hydrant helps protect you and your neighbors.
Thank you, Ms. Bandish. Engineering, anything tonight? Moving down to subdivision and land development. These are plans currently under review. First one's an extension request. Mr. Whitney?
All right. In regards to the project at 906 Ridge Pike, there's a request for an extension to May 20th, 2023, and I would make a motion that we grant this extension.
A motion from Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next item is for 101 North Lane. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Manero. Be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council has hereby approved the subdivision plan prepared for David Urb Jr., prepared by Patrick Duffy PE, last revised October 15, 2022, consisting of sheets numbers 1 through 7, proposing to subdivide the existing .51 acre lot located on 101 West North Lane, parcel number 49-00-08242-00-7, into two residential dwelling lots, subdivision application 21-3, in accordance with said plans, under and subject to the following conditions. One, that the owner developer shall execute a public improvement agreement and memorandum of public improvement agreement as required by the subdivision and land development ordinance and pay all applicable fees and assessments, including but not limited to the following: A, an impact fee for transportation capital improvements under ordinance number 1426 of 2004, as amended, said impact fee in the amount of $5,445 as determined by Carroll Engineering Corporation. B, recreation fee of $1,000 based on one new proposed dwelling unit. C, sanitary and storm sewer outfalls in the amount of $670.40 based on 1,676 square feet of new impervious surface coverage. D, sewer connection fee to be paid in accordance with the fee and schedule in effect at the time of payment. Two, that the owner developer shall prepare revised plans as set forth in the November 18, 2022 review letter of McCloskey &amp; Faber PC, the township, township landscape architect, attached to this resolution, except to the extent that waivers are granted herein to the satisfaction and approval of the township landscape architect. Three, that the owner developer shall prepare revised plans to comply with the requirements comments as set forth in the August 31, 2022 report of Carroll Engineering Corporation, the township traffic engineer, attached to this resolution, to the satisfaction and approval of the said traffic engineer. Four, that the owner developer shall prepare revised plans to comply with the requirements comments as set forth in the January 13, 2023 report of Carroll Engineering Corporation, the township sanitary sewer engineer, attached to this resolution, to the satisfaction and approval of the said sanitary sewer engineer. Five, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to comply with the requirements comments set forth in the July 11, 2022 report of Woodrow &amp; Associates, the township engineer, attached to this resolution, except to the extent that waivers are granted herein to the, to the satisfaction and approval of said township engineer. Six, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to comply with the requirements comments set forth in the July 15, 2022 report of David P. Conroy, zoning officer, attached to this resolution, to the satisfaction and approval of said zoning officer. Seven, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to comply with the requirements comments set forth in the November 15, 2022 report of Suburban Lighting Consultants, the township lighting consultant, to the satisfaction and approval of said consultant. Eight, that the owner developer shall obtain all required permits and approvals from the sewer authority, a DEP sewage facility planning module waiver, the water company with jurisdiction over the property, and a highway occupancy permit from Plymouth Township and a highway occupancy permit from PennDOT if any is needed. Nine, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to comply with the requirements set forth in the February 1, 2023 report of the Planning Agency and the February 1, 2022 report of the Montgomery County Planning Commission, each attached to this resolution, to the satisfaction and approval of, of said township zoning officer. Ten, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plan to list all waivers granted and notes required by this resolution. Eleven, prior to the issuance of any permits, all outstanding legal, engineering, and administrative fees applicable to this land development must be paid by the owner developer. Twelve, this approval is subject to the fulfillment of all the foregoing conditions in their entirety, and no permit shall be issued, nor shall any development take place on the property unless and until all such conditions are fulfilled. Further resolved, that the owner developer shall be granted the following waivers from the terms of the Plymouth Township Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance of 1980, as amended. A, Article 4, Section 401.2. A, for the requirements of information for areas within 200 feet of any of the land being subdivided. B, Article 5, Section 518.2. C, from the requirements for plans for proposed plantings be prepared by a landscape architect registered by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. C, Article 5, Section 518.5B2A, from the requirements of a softening buffer. D, Article 5, Section 518.5E1A, to the option to permit 50% of the minimum individual lot landscaping as shade tree equivalents, shrubs. E, Article 5, Section 518.4. A10, relief from the replacement tree requirement for the formerly existing tree shown on the 2008 plan. Duly presented and adopted by Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on the 13th day of February 2023, Plymouth Township, by Christopher G. Manero, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Bramblett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
The chair votes in favor. Next is an extension request. Mr. Whitney to Sandy Hill Road.
All right. This one is in regards to the property at 1508 Sandy Hill Road. They're requesting an extension to April 15, 2023. I would make a motion that we grant this extension.
There's a motion from Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Visio. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Who do I start with? Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Did I get you already?
No, now.
That was, that was the one you missed. I lost track. I've never done that before. The chair votes, the chair votes in favor.
You rattled still from last night.
It's that vacuum in the hallway. I'm losing my mind. All right. Going down to another one for Mr. Whitney, Ridge Pike.
All right. This one is in regards to the property at 1208 Ridge Pike. It is a request for an extension to March 28, 2023, and I would move that we grant this extension.
Okay. Motion from Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next is an extension request for Royal Farms, 906 Ridge Pike. Mr. Whitney?
All right. This is in regards to the Royal Farms project at 906 Ridge Pike. There is a request to grant an extension to April 1, 2023. I would make a motion that we grant this extension.
Motion from Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Chair votes in favor. Moving down to projects conditionally approved but not yet recorded. This is an amendment for Fingers, Wings, and Other Things to conditional approval resolution. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Manero. Be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council previously approved Resolution 2022-11, which approved the preliminary final land development plan prepared for Eric G. Flaxman and Craig Flaxman by Apex Design and Engineering Group dated October 20, 2021, consisting of sheets numbers 1 through 8, proposing to develop a lot located at 107 Ridge Pike between Chemical Road and Butler Pike, being used as a restaurant called Fingers, Wings, and Other Things, seeking to construct an expansion of an outdoor patio space consisting of approximately 386 square feet and a parking lot expansion of 19 spaces with improved stormwater and drainage management and landscaping. Land development number LD 21-6, and the township also approved Resolution 2022-23, which amended Condition 1A of the previously approved resolution, which dealt with impact fees. And whereas certain waiver requests were granted in association with the approval, and whereas the owner developer has modified the previously approved plans by eliminating the 386 square foot rear patio addition and has revised the color of the proposed vinyl privacy fence pursuant to the revised plans and landscaping plan last revised December 12, 2022, and whereas the owner developer is also requesting three additional waivers. Further resolved, that the owner developer shall be granted the following waivers from the terms of the Plymouth Township Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance of 1980, as amended. A, Article 5, Section 502.3. P, to provide an alternate paving section for the new parking areas in the rear of the property. B, Article 5, Section 518.5. C. 3A, to provide five-foot-tall evergreen trees in the buffers in lieu of the required plantings. C, Article 5, Section 518.5. D. 5, and 518.5. H. 1C, to utilize two-inch shade trees within the basin perimeters and parking lot islands. All other terms and conditions of the Resolution 2022-11 and Resolution 2022-23 shall remain in full force and effect, duly presented and adopted by Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on the 13th day of February 2023, Plymouth Township, by Christopher G. Manero, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Motion from Ms. Visio. Is there a second? Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to projects that are under construction. We have three escrow releases for the Driscoll tract, and I'll hand those, 1, 2, 3, to Ms. Visio.
Chair, the first one is referencing Driscoll tract, Phase 2, escrow release number 2. I have a letter from Timothy Woodrow stating that based on field observations and work completed, sufficient work has been completed to release the amount of $81,121.57. I remove that, release that amount.
Okay. There's a motion from Ms. Visio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Whitney. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
The chair votes in favor. Next one, Ms. Visio.
Next is referencing Driscoll tract, Phase 1A, escrow release number 3, also a letter from Mr. Timothy Woodrow, stating that based on field observations and work completed to date, there's sufficient work completed to release the amount of $785,866.37, and I remove that, release that amount.
A motion from Ms. Visio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Number 3?
Third is also referencing Driscoll tract, Phase 1B, escrow release number 2, again based on a letter from Mr. Woodrow, based on field observations and work completed to date, sufficient work has been completed to release the amount of $525,493.39, and I remove that, release that amount.
Okay. A motion from Ms. Visio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And the fourth escrow release from Ms. Visio is for Cold Point Village Station.
Yes, escrow release number 3, based on a letter from Mr. Van Nuys, also stating field observations and work completed to date, sufficient work has been done to release the amount of $266,265.50. I remove that, release that amount.
A motion from Ms. Visio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Whitney. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
The chair votes in favor. Moving down to code enforcement. We have a building permit fee waiver request for Plymouth Fire Company. Ms. Bramblett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a request from the Plymouth Fire Company to waive fees for installation of a new HVAC unit. The total fee is $656.40. Another fee for Keystone, $543.25, which they are waiving, and they are requesting that the township waive $108.65. I make a motion that we waive this fee for Plymouth Fire Company.
There's a motion from Ms. Bramblett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And we have a building permit, permit waiver request from Harmonville Fire Company as well. Ms. Bramblett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.[1703.83]
We have a request from the Harmonville Fire Company with respect to fee waivers. Station A on Butler Pike, there is a fee of $1,030.26. The Keystone portion is $854.80. Plymouth's portion is $175.46. The, and for their electrical as well. The Station B on Germantown Pike, they are requesting of a fee of $1,012.2, of which the Keystone portion is $839.60. Building and electrical, they are requesting a fee waiver from Plymouth of $172.42. I make a motion that we grant both of these requests from Harmonville Fire Company.
And there's a motion from Ms. Bramblett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Visio. Comments or questions from council? Or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to zoning. Ms. Bandish?
Yes, the zoning hearings, there will be three continued hearings for the Butler Pike Apartments LLC. This was fully announced at the meeting last month. All interested parties may attend the hearings. In addition, should I go on to opposition? I'd make a motion, previously council had opposed this zoning variation, but we wish to rescind that opposition at this point. I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, there's a motion from Ms. Bandish. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Whitney. Comments or questions from council? Or from the audience? Seeing none, we will do a vote on withdrawing the opposition. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
The chair votes in favor. Moving down to Parks and Recreation, upcoming events. Ms. Visio?
Upcoming events, we have Schools Out Activity Days on Friday, February 17th and Monday, February 20th. There is inflatable float day on Sunday, February 19th. There is also resident camp registration taking place on February 21st. We'll be celebrating Plymouth Township, celebrating Black Heritage Day on Saturday, February 25th. Veterans banners that will be hung at the park are available. And the deadline for requesting one of those is April 1st. And also just a reminder to save the date for upcoming Plymouth Township Day, which will take place on Saturday, June 3rd.
Thank you, Ms. Visio. All right, moving down to our citizen board vacancy announcements. Mr. Whitney?
All right, all residents wishing to serve on the following citizen boards are asked to submit their resume or a letter stating their interest to the township manager at 700 Belvedere Road, 1922, or preferably via email to kweiss@plymouthtownship.org. The following citizen board positions are open. Property Maintenance Code Appeals Board, there are three positions open there. The Historical Architectural Review Board, one position open there. The Environmental Advisory Board, the Human Relations Commission, the Parks, Recreation, and Shade Tree Advisory Board, and the Zoning Hearing Board.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. And we would like to make one appointment tonight to an open citizen board vacancy. Ms. Bramblett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Martin Higgins to the zoning hearing board.
Okay, there's a motion from Ms. Bramblett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council? Or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Anything additional from council? Okay, any audience participation for tonight? I guess she has to come up closer to the microphones, right? You could even sit in one of these front chairs.
Good evening, all. Good evening to the community members and to council. My name is P. L. Plant. I'm a resident of Plymouth Township. I am making the following statement for the record. On behalf of CARSE, and for those of you that don't know CARSE, CARSE is the colonial area anti-racism social equity alliance. Hence the reason we go by CARSE. Our partner Pastor Alex Evangelista and the entire congregation of Church on the Mall, we are here today to propose the opening of a Code Blue shelter for the unhoused in our community. Special thank you to those that we've partnered with thus far as we embark on this much-needed endeavor to aid our unhoused population in our communities. It is a tragedy that in the beginning of our winter season, we lost two individuals who were without housing. As a result of this tragedy, along with learning that we have a population of unhoused individuals and families in our community, CARSE partnered with Plymouth Police to host a holiday meal at Church on the Mall on December 21st, 2022. Simultaneously, we started reaching out to Montgomery County entities, specifically Your Way Home and other nonprofit organizations to inquire on how our organization could assist this population. It was recommended to us that the greatest need was to provide short-term housing for these individuals, and so we immediately got started with the attempt to opening a Code Blue shelter. Through the expeditious efforts of Pastor Alex and CARSE, we are glad to say that the Plymouth Meeting Mall owners along with Church on the Mall council have approved the opening of the Code Blue shelter at Church on the Mall. Additionally, with the assistance of Your Way Home, we have been equipped with the necessary resource information to make this happen. We are seeking this council's support and approval to move forward. A more formal detailed proposal providing summary, opportunity, objective, and scope of the Code Blue shelter was submitted prior to this meeting. I will not be reading the entire proposal at this time. Lastly, and most important, having basic shelter is one of the utmost basic human needs that we all should be afforded as Americans. It is the foundation of feeling safe and living a productive life. However, as we have seen across the country and in our own community, the population of unhoused families has grown and continues to grow. Although CARSE, with the help of community donations and volunteerism, has been actively engaged for the past two years with providing basic needs such as clothing, sleeping bags, packaged food, blankets, et cetera. On a monthly basis at the Norristown Transportation Center, there is more need to be done. It is the desire of CARSE, Church on the Mall, and all of our partners that we do our absolute best in helping end this inhumane and social inequitable situation that is occurring within our own backyard. In order that we can move fervently to open the Code Blue shelter at Church on the Mall, we ask that you provide your approval. A CARSE Community Education Series on the unhoused situation and Code Blue sheltering would follow accompanying approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I just have a question or two, just I guess for anybody in general in the audience first. Could you just talk a little bit about how, in terms of a Code Blue, and when somebody would be eligible to go to the shelter and how long they can stay there and how that works with the Code Blue system?
Sure, so the Montgomery County declares the Code Blue. There are, I don't have the specifics in front of me, but there are specifics around the temperatures. So based off of the temperatures, they will declare a Code Blue. Once it declared a Code Blue, it's to carry a 12-hour timeframe, 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. And so the shelter would be that 12 hours. Our goal and intent would be to monitor the 12 hours through four or three-hour shifts using our, using volunteers from the community.
And are there other Code Blue shelters, temporary shelters throughout Montgomery County?
Correct, yes. There are not many. There is one in Norristown and one in Landdale.
Do they have any, is there any, this is gonna sound like a dumb question. Is there like the opposite of a Code Blue in the summer, if we have excessive heat? Is our code red?
It's longer than summer. And so typically, it's daytime when it's mostly hot and not in the evenings. It's opposite timeframe. However, the county typically doesn't necessarily look for sheltering because there is like locations like the mall or other public locations that they would recommend for the unhoused to go to during the day.
Thank you.
Is there a way that someone is tracking people who are homeless and helping them know that a shelter is open and helping to get them there? Is that all part of the process as well?
Correct, yes. So we have partnered with SEPTA because SEPTA is of the Norristown Transportation Center, which comes all the way over to the mall. And Your Way Home tracks the number of homeless people. And unfortunately, not everyone will go. It's a trust factor. It's building relationship, which is part of what we want to do is to build relationships so that they have the trust and will be willing to get out of the Code Blue, so that we don't see anyone else lose their lives.
Is part of the shelter also providing?
Correct, yes. So the, there's partners in that as well. So we've gotten commitments from Whole Foods, Chick-fil-A, and so far.
There's a kitchen, I know at Church on the Mall.
Yes, there's a kitchen. There's restaurants at Church on the Mall. The Church on the Mall, it would be isolated to the first floor, if you know, they have two floors. But it would isolate to the first floor just to control the population. The Your Way Home came out and did a site visit to make an assessment. And their assessment was that it could house 35 beds.
Does the county have any programs to follow up with people who are homeless to help them maintain permanent houses?
Yes, they do. There's a whole process.
There's an initiative that kicks in after the fact.
It's not enough to house everyone that's unhoused, but there is a process.
It's my understanding that you've been working with the county, excuse me, the county and the mall and the Church on the Mall, as well as your own organization, CARSE. So I just want to commend you for pulling all those resources together. I know that one of the people who died in our first Code Blue back in October 2022 was actually a Plymouth resident. So it is needed here in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, for your support.
I mean, I hope we don't find ourselves in situations where there are homeless families, but I assume like the shelter would take in anyone in need, like families with children.
So fortunately, I guess for families, it's a little bit easier to get housing because of children. And so there's another organization called Family Promise. They only take families. Most of the need is for individuals, for those that are individually homeless. But there are other organizations that are more inclusive.
Just a question, I guess, for Karen or for, like, I know Ms. Plant's asking for our support, but because this would be an approved use under the church, we don't, there's really nothing for us to approve, correct?
That's correct.
I have a question.
Are you, you'll have to come up to the, to the, to announce yourself official.
Hi, I'm Artis Lupin. I'm a community person. I know that for a lot of homeless people, their pets are very important. Which is why they more go into a shelter during Code Blue because pets won't be allowed. What has been decided, or will pets be allowed into the shelter? Or has anyone thought about a way of helping those homeless people out?
So I have to take that back. We did not consider that. That's something that we would need to take back. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah. I wonder if local rescue team would help. Well, I was wondering if, yeah, Montgomery County Response Team could step in as well. Because that's our job.
Any additional questions for Ms. Plant?
I just want to say, even if we don't have to approve it, I just want to say thank you for all your support and ownership.
Thank you for all your support.
I support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional audience participation tonight?
No, go ahead. Continue.
My name's Apple Schilt. I was here back in July. And we were talking about East Plymouth Valley Park and the Plymouth Little League with the speakers that they have, that they installed. Before the Plymouth Little League starts their new season, I was wondering what kind of action was taken with the speaker, like what we're gonna do with it and how we're gonna resolve the seven days a week.
Probably good timing coming here early now. And I don't know, I don't know if anybody else, I mean, I have not reached back out to them to find out, but I certainly can and will this week.
They were supposed to move the speakers. There was.
Yeah, I remember everything. Yep.
So the thing that I am having the biggest problem with is, I went to Miles Park in White Marsh. I walked the entire Little League they have there. There's no speakers, no speakers. I went to Suffcliss Park in Conshohocken, no speakers. Suffcliss Park, they have a police officer there that will, whatever time the lights are supposed to be off, the lights have to be off. There's no 15-minute gray spears. The lights have to be off. That's how it works there. I went to East Martin's Little League up on Burnside Avenue, no speakers. So I just can't understand why the Plymouth Little League needs all these speakers. It needs it to be so loud. It ruins our neighborhood. It really does.
I think we had, I think we had kind of all, I believe they had all come to the agreement that they needed to address them and fix them. So again, all I can say is I can call them this week.
But they did nothing so far.
Well, I don't know if we know what they've done yet.
I live there. I see it every day.
Right, but I mean, but it's been.
The speakers are still there.
Right, but it's been the winter time and maybe they have a plan to change them all out when spring comes. So let me reach out to them this week. I will find out what the status is and I'll get back to you as soon as I talk to them. Yep. Additional audience participation? Artists?
First of all, I want to thank the council and the police department for everything that has been done down on Conshohocken Road. They have, I don't know if you guys know, but there is now a proposal for stop signs and crosswalks, which would be absolutely wonderful if we could get them. I contacted Greg Scott. Hopefully he'll be able to help us out now that he's in Harrisburg. The only other thing, and I know I have to put in, put this in a writing, is to put a sidewalk along, either to continue the sidewalk that's already there, have it go under the blue roof to the second stop sign up on Old Elm, and then have that be a crosswalk so that any pedestrians, children, it kind of links them to the bike trail. And it also, I think, will be safer for the kids that are walking back and forth from the proving grounds up into Conshohocken to pick up any kind of public transportation. So I'm just thinking that might be a really good idea to do. If you go down the other way, I don't think it's really feasible. It would be too much construction and too much work. We have another resident who is having some problems with parking. Handicap parking is, I think we need some more handicap parking spots. So if you could help me out with that, that would be great. But, you know, we still have a problem with this beating along Conshohocken Road. It was real bad last night, especially right before the Super Bowl. They were just with and by. But I wanted to thank everyone for the work that they have done and for the support they've given Conneetown in, you know, getting our community to be more part of Plymouth.
Just a clarified question, I guess John probably just, or for John, for to request, to add additional handicap parking. That needs to, is that a request from a, need to come from a resident who specifically needs it? That they have to request that? Or am I wrong?
I don't believe it has to be for the resident because the parking space is, it's a handicap spot. I know Conshohocken has their own ordinance where it was a specific tag only, but I don't believe that we have that. So it would have to be, if there's somebody in the area that needs it, but it would be for anybody.
Anybody, anybody can park there.
Okay, because we do need it. We have specific, especially down in Conneetown, we have at least three people that need a specific spot. So that would be something that we, you know, if there was an ordinance that could be passed so that it could have the plate number of that person, that would be great.
Thank you. Additional audience participation?
Carol Best on 519 Old Elm Street. They did cinder White Street this past two weeks ago. And I don't know who cinder Fulton Street, but that was also cinder. But that's a good thing. But according to you people, Pendot, you, Pendot told me when I went there, they only own about three feet from the wall along the blue roof. And the other part, no one, you said, they own it, they said, you own it. Just where that one house is, that's as far in the way it cinder, I mean, quite a few more feet up. But up where I'm at, it's further up. And when it rains, I park back there when it snows. Because I can't park on my street there. What else? I'm the one about the handicap parking thing. My neighbors, three doors up, they do a business from their house. I don't know what they do. And people from different states come to their house. They'll stay three or four days, then they leave. And within the past two weeks, the same car that's been coming there two or three years just has a handicap parking spot, the placard. And I cannot do anything about it. I understand that. But on my street and New Elm, it's murder. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Additional audience comments? Anything else? Last chance?